Call this meeting to order. This is the regular council meeting for the City of Now Then, August 11th, 2022, 7:00 PM. And would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Administrator's please call. Councilmember Mayor, here. Councilmember Alders.
Here.
Councilmember Blake.
Here.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Rainville.
Here.
All right. So I'd look for a, any amendments, additions to tonight's agenda. I would like to add under the two, I would like to add item C, we're actually looking at volunteer recognition. Are there any other amendments or additions to tonight's agenda? Councilmember Greenberg.
Could I under eight, city council add a B, park update?
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Alders.
I'd like to move consent agenda D to city council, item C.
Seeing and hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I move that we accept the agenda as amended.
We have a motion from Councilmember Rainville.
I second it.
And a second from Councilmember Blake. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so our first item of business tonight is a very significant event in our city. We have hired our first ever administrator as we transition to a city from a township. We've had a clerk treasurer operation, and now we have an administrator who also covers the clerk treasurer duties. And so I'd like to read the RCA that was presented here. Background information on this, it's an honor to serve one's community as a local government official. Regardless of the capacity one serves, whether elected or appointed, the administration of one's official duties have a significant effect upon the community in the short and in the long run. An oath is a public pledge that the official understands the responsibilities of the position, its impacts, and will work to meet and even exceed job requirements. Oaths date back to at least the time of ancient Rome, and ever since then have become a staple of representative government. In the United States of America, oaths have become a requirement for public office since the nation's inception. State and local governments adopted oaths modeled after the federal oath, and taking the oath has become a requisite for holding every public office in Minnesota and many of its principalities. Here in Now Then, the oath of office to city administrator celebrates a new and an exciting era for our community. We have moved from township to city, and in form of government, from city clerk to city administrator. As residents, we should all acknowledge that this is an important next step in the development of our city. To Mr. Lehner and to each of us as council members, our respective oaths may not only affirm our understanding and commitment to our respective responsibilities, but also our oaths bind us as a team to do the very best that each of us can for Now Then and the community which we all hold so dear. So I would like to now administer the oath to Mr. Lehner, the office of city administrator. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Hi, Scott Lehner.
Hi, Scott Lehner.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
For, in behalf of the citizens of the City of Now Then.
For, in behalf of the citizens of Now Then.
Discharge the duties of the office of city administrator.
Discharge the duties of the city administrator.
For the City of Now Then and the County of Anoka.
For the City of Now Then and the County of Anoka.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my ability and judgment.
To the best of my ability and judgment.
To help me guide.
So help me guide.
Congratulations. Congrats.
Congratulations, Scott.
Thank you very much, appreciate that very much, thank you all.
Thank you. So now we, in addition to that, one of the things that we've added as we have administrator, there's the ICMA, and there's another RCA here, but this is the Code of Ethics. And so I would like, since Frank is a member of the International City Management Association, I would like Frank, our outgoing city administrator, to read the oath of ethics that we will be, as a council, abiding by and as an administration, abiding by.
Mr. Mayor, would you prefer I do that from here, or would you like to go to the roster?
Go to the roster.
Go ahead.
He was not, it's not in the Code of Ethics. I'm sorry, I do not mean to be late about this.
Jason, is his microphone on?
It is, yep.
He checked it for me. Collectively and individually, we expect a great deal from both elected and appointed officials. After all, they are our government. Whether we like government or not, they serve a very, very important function, we do. Businesses look out the next 12, or 15, or 24 months. Governments are supposed to look way out there to help themselves and their residents, obviously, to accomplish that which we can best do together collectively, as a community, working with our various resources, whether it's mental resources, physical or otherwise. And so it's so important that we understand the onerous responsibility, and yet wonderful responsibility that we have. This little pin I have says I'm a lifelong member of ICMA. ICMA stands for International City Management Association. It represents administrators, managers, anyone who is in a management position all around the world. It's an enormous organization, and I think for all of our benefit. And there is a Code of Ethics that they've established because the job of manager and administrator is significant and does require rules of the road, just as the job of a firefighter or a fire official or police officer does. And so now I'll get to it. There are 12 tenets in the ICMA Code of Ethics. The first is, we believe professional management is essential to the efficient and democratic local government by elected officials. Two, we affirm the dignity and worth of local government services, pardon me, and maintain a deep sense of social responsibility as trusted public servants. Unfortunately, some people have taken some concern about public servants. It is an honorable term. It is something that we're lucky to be able to perform. Three, demonstrated by word and action the highest standards of ethical conduct and integrity in all public, professional, and personal relationships in order that the member, that would be a manager or administrator, may merit the trust and respect of elected and appointed officials, employees, and public. Four, key one, very short, but serve the best interests of the people. Five, submit policy proposals to elected officials, provide them with the facts and the technical and professional advice about policy options, and collaborate with them in setting goals, and I would say accomplishing them, for the community and the organization. Six, recognize that elected representatives are accountable to their community for the decisions they make. Members are responsible for implementing those decisions, that is, the administrators and managers. Seven, refrain from all political activities which undermine public confidence in professional administrators. Refrain from participation in election of members of employing legislative body. That means that Scott should not be engaged in any kind of local, public activities, political activities. Number eight, make it a duty continually to improve the members' professional ability and to develop competence of associates in the use of management techniques. In other, in other words, develop folks that are taking up this profession. Number nine, keep the community informed on local government affairs. Encourage communication between the citizens and all local government officers. Emphasize friendly and courteous service to the public and seek to improve quality and image of public service. Pardon me. Number 10, resist any encroachment on professional responsibilities, believing that members should be free to carry out their official policies without interference and to handle each problem without discrimination on the basis of principle or justice. Number 11, handle all matters of personnel, pardon me, on the basis of merit so that fairness and impartiality govern a member's decision, decisions pertaining to appointments, pay adjustments, promotions, and discipline. And finally, the public office is the public trust. A member shall not leverage his or her position for his own or her own personal gain or benefit. This was adopted in 1924 and was most recently reapproved in June 2020. I'm sorry, I didn't think that was going to happen. Incredible profession. And to be able to make the difference in other people's lives in the short and long term, it's just amazing. And it's something you look back upon with a greatest degree of respect and honor. And I'm sorry for getting so darn emotional. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Obviously, it's important that these are not just words to you, it's, and we anticipate that Scott's going to have the same passion here. And we appreciate the heartfelt years that you've put into this and commitment to the ICMA. I would like to take one more opportunity, because Mr. Lehner's family is here, I would like to get a picture for our records with his family. And then I would also like to announce that we are having an open house for Scott, for the community. We're inviting elected and appointed officials, businesses, and certainly residents to come in. So on Tuesday, August 23rd, from 4:30 to 6:30 in this location, we will have an open house welcoming Scott officially to the community. So they come in and meet him in person. If you just, probably your family's not ready for it, but we would like to take a picture with the family.
Cool.
Okay. Where do we do, I guess? There's really no place. Just stand by the flag.
You wouldn't by the flag?
Yeah, by the, take the picture by the flag, that would be cool.
I did mean to embarrass your family, if you could just introduce some.
Sure, this is my wife, Kim. I have three kids, two of them are here, obviously. My oldest is not here. This is my son Zachary, and this is my daughter Bethany.
Hello. Congratulations.
Welcome to the family.
Can I just ask, Bethany, go a little bit so that you're, sorry to say, covering up the hole that's in the hall.
They had a great place here, cover up the hole in the wall.
All right, one, two, three. Do you got a phone, you want us to take one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, I didn't mean to stop.
She's got cowboy boy girl boots on, you better take care of it, Jason.
Yeah.
It's going to be all over Insta message and Facebook. Hey. One, two, three. One, two, three. All right, four squares around your head, that should be good.
Nice to meet everyone.
No promises.
Welcome.
Thanks you guys for coming. We'll see you later.
Cute daughter, very far here.
All right, you guys have a good night. Got a bumper sticker.
Yeah, I said you should take the picture, she looks like she's catching herself.
That was, that was Councilmember Rainville. Oh, I just, I just listened now.
Excellent, Councilmember Rainville, thank you for making that happen.
I might as well just pee past in the nose, but it was like.
All right, item C, we have a volunteer recognition we would like to address. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Blake.
Okay, many of us know that Mary Rainville is a dedicated volunteer in the City of Now Then. You're going to find her lots of places, working with the Lions, the senior citizens, luncheon, Heritage Days, the farmer's market, the voting booth, or helping out neighbors. And so she has been chosen as a top 100 national winner of the Small Town American Civic Volunteer Award. She was nominated along with 700 nominees from 49 states, and she made the top 100. Her service to our community is an inspiration to all, and is exactly what the organizers of this award had in mind, people like Mary. I know myself, I've been quite impressed because Mary comes from a family that does this type of thing, and this is where she puts her energy, love, and all of her hard work. As a result of this selection, your community were eligible for a volunteer standard module to help organize and inspire others, but they're going to decide who gets that, we may not. Anyway, if you want to look this up, Mary, it's going to tell you, it's on their site, you can find your name listed there and view it. Again, congratulations on this prestigious award, and they did send you this wonderful certificate and a small token of their appreciation with some more items. So congratulations, Mary.
You're welcome. It's quite an honor. I would say that my parents did teach me to be active in the community. We grew up in public safety and public civil service jobs, giving back to our communities. That's an important thing for people to do, and I've enjoyed all of the things that I've done. I know when I moved to Now Then, I came out here kicking and screaming. My husband will attest to that, she was in tears. And it wasn't moving to Now Then, it was just moving out of my neighborhood and away from my family, and that was very difficult. And I thought, how do I meet people? And my husband says, well, your sister's live in small towns. And I said, they have children, and they meet people through their children's activities. If I had a child, he'd be 35, and he's not going to be living at home with me, so I won't, you know, I got to figure out ways. So I found the volunteer activities that the city afforded and got involved, and again, I've enjoyed every minute of it. I've enjoyed all my time on the council, and made a lot of good friends, and I want to thank you again, Linda, for doing this.
You're welcome, and actually, the city council is close to a volunteer type of junts.
Thank you very much, Mary, that really is.
What?
Linda, thank you for thinking of it and suing that.
Oh, here you can have the letter too.
All right, we have a, excellent consent agenda, approving the council minutes from regular meeting of July 19th, approval of the claims July 20th through August 11th, and the treasurer's report, approval of a resolution approving the replacement of the sink in the Memorial Park concession building, approval of use of golf carts and temporary road closures on 199th and Iguana, the end of Iguana for September 24th for the Ninth Annual Car Show, approval of resignation of Chad Sacree, is Sacree, right?
Right.
Sacree as a Now Then paid-on-call firefighter, we will miss him, valuable part, and unfortunately isn't able to continue with us, but we understand the circumstances, so please extend our best to him.
Absolutely.
And thank him, obviously, for his service from the council. Approval to hire Chad Lucanen as a paid-on-call firefighter for the City of Now Then, and approval of resolution authorizing the hire of two temporary part-time individuals to complete the scanning of paper records and organizational items in the city offices. I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we accept the consent agenda as amended.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Blake, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion from, seconded from Councilmember Alders. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Floor items, do we have our list? Probably be good to have just a blank in here, so we can take notes and see what we can do. Sam Corns. Four items, we have three minutes. Typically, this is for things that aren't on the agenda for that evening. So please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes. And again, typically, we don't, as a council, act tonight on that, but we bring it forward to the staff, whatever comes up.
Understood. My name is Sam Corns, address 19223 Burns Parkway. Mr. Mayor, city council, good evening, thank you for your time. I, I come today because I want to talk a little bit about the city code violations. I received one on my property. I received one on the 20th of July, and I've been trying to work with Liz Stockman, I was really hoping she would be here tonight, but unfortunately, she is not. So basically, I would just like some information, and I know you said we don't, the city council and the mayor, they won't act on anything tonight, but I would just like a little bit of detail on what the policies are in terms of handing out a code violation and go from there. Is that possible to discuss that in a couple of minutes' time? I can, I can keep speaking with what I have to talk about.
Keep speaking what you have, because we wouldn't be prepared to address.
Perfect, perfect. So I got this, this notification with a list of items that has absolutely nothing to do with my property. Says that I have semi-trucks and semi-trailers parked on my property, dumpsters, unlicensed, inoperable vehicles, debris everywhere. I mean, it's just, it's absolutely terrible. So I reached out to Liz, and she, she's a very difficult person to get ahold of, it turns out, and she did not really return emails. I understand she took some time off for that week after this was issued. So as it says in this letter, reach out to the city, so I reached out to the city. Well, the city doesn't have any information on this in particular situation, so it took the city some time to dig this up, exactly what the complaint is. And my issue, my issue is not that I, I don't want the city coming out to my property, the issue that I have is, I would like a detail about what the, what the issues are. If, if my neighbor says I have two school buses parked out behind my garage, then tell me you're coming out to look for two school buses parked out behind my garage. This is what I, this is what I got in email from the city. The homeowner regraded wetland with multiple buckets of filled dirt, erected a permanent structure slash bridge over protected wetland, as well as roping off access. In addition, multiple items stored on the property. So that's not even coming from Liz, that's coming from the city, who had to pry that out of Liz's hands. Liz has yet to give me the copy of this, this right here is the complaint form through the City of Now Then, to which I understand, after I read the city policy, that if there's a complaint to be made, the complainant should fill out this form, bring it to the city office, they'll receive it, that way it's documented. Obviously, the identities of the individuals are sealed, which is fine, black them out, but give me the list of what, of what the complaints are about. I want to know exactly what the problems are. So as soon as I, as soon as I heard about this wetlands, I reached out to Anoka County Soil and Water Conservation District, I invited them out, and myself and Ms. Becky Wasney, we walked on the property, and she pointed out to me things that I didn't really know about wetlands. I have a pond in my backyard. She pointed out what the difference is, what type of wetland this is. She, she made it very clear that what I was doing, cleaning up my property, is not malicious, I'm not disrespecting wetlands by any means, and she's trying to reach out to the gentleman in the DNR who has jurisdiction on the pond that connects to mine. So she's going to type up some, she's going to type up a report and get back to Liz on that, but Ms. Stockman is under the impression that she's going to come out to my property and compile a list of things that are out of order, in her opinion, that day, and I take issue with that. She, she said she used an aerial photo, so on Anoka County GIS, here's the printout from that, the most recent picture they have is from 2020. So it's two years ago that she's going off a picture of my property, it was two years ago, and if you even drive down the street, if you even look at my property from the, from the street, you can see that none of this is even remotely close to being present day. So when it comes to this list that she generated, that she sent out to me, I'm incredibly confused that I really don't know which, which way to go with this, but the only thing that I can see that has any merit that's been discussed is the wetland issue which I've been dealing with. I, I'm more than happy to invite the city out, the, anybody from the city, hopefully not Liz, because we're not really on working terms right now, but I'd gladly invite somebody out if they can tell me at least what they're coming out to look for. If there was no written complaint, then I don't understand how this is even going any further, because there's nothing documented. She can just say whatever she wants to, type up any letter she wants, and make her way onto people's property looking for anything out of sorts. So that's my part, that's, that's what I have issues with right now, and I don't, I don't believe that she's following the city code, the city policy. I have that printed out here, just to look at it again, because in city policy, section five, administrative enforcement, it says, section five procedure, number one, upon a written, upon receipt of a written complaint by the city offices. So if you don't have a written complaint, then you're just free to make up whatever comes to mind, and make a list such as this, saying that I have semi-trucks and abandoned junk vehicles and piles of firewood stored up next to my house. I, it, it just. I, it just does not make a lot of sense to me, so.
So let me, your time is up.
Sure.
And obviously, we won't be addressing here tonight, but we'll. My understanding is, because this is coming to our attention, there is a written complaint. But let's let the staff, because Liz was gone. We have Scott, who's just finishing up his first two weeks here.
Sure.
So as Frank and Scott and Liz can get together and formulate a proper response. You've obviously articulated your concerns about coming on the property without identifying what we're looking for.
Yes.
Understood. So let's give them a chance to digest what they've here tonight, with whatever communication you've already had with them, and get back to you. Are you in next week?
About three days next week, so maybe.
The end of next week?
The end of next week. I'm in for another weekend.
So let's get a response back as quickly as possible. I'm assuming no action is being taken at this point, so.
Mr. Mayor, may I clarify? It is a confusing process. There's no question about it. We often receive concerns from residents either in person or by email or by letter. And in this case, by letter. In fact, Mr. Corns read the letter we received, minus the complainant's name. So that's what we have thus far. We're not making any assumptions that, oh, boy, Mr. Corns has done something wrong. We simply have received a letter that suggests there may be something. So first step in that process is what? To advise Mr. Corns, hey, we've received a complaint from somebody. We don't know if it's valid. Let's work together to, A, see what's happening. And then, B, if there is something in violation, people don't intentionally do things to violate. They may not know, so let's see if we can work together to clarify it. That's where we stand right now. I can tell you that I've been copied on a variety of emails back and forth, Mr. Corns and Liz. And they've been communicating with each other. Unfortunately, it's been escalating. Hopefully, we can kind of pull her down. Thank you for being here. And keep it to step one. Is there something wrong? And so how do we know that? I can't know that from an aerial view, as you indicated, that's two years old. You have to go out there and see. So that's the simple purpose. If there's nothing there, we're not going any further. If there's something there, then how can we work together to get it resolved?
Well, that's the question that I have before you today, is if the complaint can read multiple items stored on property. So if that's the case, any resident in the city of Now Then can say, that gentleman over there has got multiple items stored on his property. Now let's get the city out and walk all over his yard and nitpick and say everything that's out of sort. We live in Now Then. Oh, my gosh, if you have a trailer out behind your pole barn, is the city going to find you for it? It's, I just do not believe that items stored on property is sufficient enough to rate a home visit from the sighting official, who would be Liz Stockman.
But I think, Mr. Corns, that you would agree. Now whether it's you, or Liz, or me, or any resident here, that they have, if they have a concern, that it merits at least some investigation on behalf of the city and some desire to be able to resolve the matter as quickly and as comfortably and as collaboratively as we possibly can. And that's precisely what is happening here.
I'll agree to disagree.
That's fine.
I've said my piece. I would just like a list of items that they're coming out to look for. I don't want it to be an Easter egg hunt for items that they think are city code violations. If somebody has a complaint about the property, then list it. The only thing that's been listed is a wetland issue that I believe has been taken care of, so.
Then there's no problem.
Then there's no problem. Exactly.
But we have to come on the property to verify that. That's all that's happening.
So, okay, if that's the case, if the city comes on the property to verify that, the way that Liz is making this sound, if she comes on the property to verify that, she's coming on the property to verify everything on the property. So what exactly is she verifying? That's my question. That's where I'm at.
How can one answer that question unless they come out to your property?
Well, unless they have a list.
And work with you to see what's happening. That's all it is. Please don't.
I will say that typically, if we're going out for a specific complaint and some other violation is observed, it's brought up at that point, yeah.
Sure. It's brought up to the homeowner that, hey, we're out here looking for school buses, but see that wood pile? That could be a city code violation. Let's kind of take care of that, you know?
Right.
Just from me to you. But no, if she's going to come out with a pad and pen and start writing me up for code violations and forcing me to turn my house into the city of Edina, I'm going to take issue with it. So.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
We've heard that part. Mr. Peter Lainer. Obviously, Frank, you've been working with Liz on this. You're getting up to speed on it.
Yep.
So now we can take those concerns and address them specifically. And by that time, I'm guessing we'll have some report from Ms. Wasney too. So that will be.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Thanks for sharing your thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
And certainly, from a council standpoint, Mr. Corns raises a valid question. What is it we're looking for when we get a complaint? And what is our limitation?
Well, the other gap that we've talked about in the past is Now Then is a community of newer homes and certain residences, and it's also a farm community. And if we say, you can't have anything outside your property and you drive past any of the farms that are here, that's like, it's an, so there's the gray area that you have to try to manage, right? So then you try to manage it a little bit like, okay, if your neighbors aren't saying anything, it may or may not be a problem. But we typically have said, that's kind of where we draw the line. So you're looking for the black and white on, if you're telling me I got a wetland issue, I'm working that. If you're telling me I got a mule spreader and a tractor out there, or whatever the heck it is, I have issue with that. So that's, I mean, and that is not just a gap that you have. I mean, it's something that, is a tractor or a mule spreader okay out in the more rural areas? But is it not okay if you're in the more populated areas where there's more suburban type? So those are, that's what we try to work our way through.
Sure.
So, and I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that either one of them is right or wrong. But when you go to some areas in Now Then, it is more residential on two and a half acre lots. And the houses are a little closer together. And you go to others and it's ten, twenty, thirty, forty, eighty acres. And there might be more stuff out there, because it's a farm property or more rural property. So somewhere in the middle is what we got to manage and work through, like, together.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Good evening.
All right. Sheriff's report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city administrators. I have a sheriff's report for activity within the city of Now Then for July of 2022. We responded to a total of one hundred and nineteen calls for service. One call up to bar none. Three alarm calls, one medical, and three animal calls for service. Some noteworthy calls within the city for the month of July. On the first, we responded to a report of loose cows, twenty-one hundred block of Now Then Boulevard. The cows were able to escape their pen and trespassed on a neighboring field, causing some damage.
Now, I have to say, in honor of our previous mayor, they're probably steers. He got very upset when people called his steers cows.
Duly noted for the follow-up investigation. Thank you. We did get a call out there. There was some damage to the neighboring strawberry fields. The victim in this matter declined to press charges and merely wanted it documented. The two neighbors are going to work together without the sheriff's office involved, but. So noteworthy call nonetheless.
Liz up on Now Then Boulevard?
Yes, sir. On the eighth, at four oh two.
I'm just guessing that you don't get a lot of those at the sheriff's office.
You know, I started reading reports like that when I started here at the sheriff's office in 2019 and not something I was used to hearing on the radio or seeing in reports. I came from a more urban police department before I came out here. And loose cows is not something I was prepared to handle then, nor am I now. But thankfully, we have some deputies with some experience in that matter. And in this case, it is not something we respond to on a regular basis, but it is something that we have in the past responded to. And actually, we have had to assist with wrangling livestock from time to time as well, so. Usually creates some interesting photo ops. You know, we.
You weren't here for our alligator, were you?
No, sir.
That was a good photo op. And the wrangling the buffalo was another one. Got the ATVs out for that one.
We'll have to, we'll have to catch up on that one off the air. That's interesting. On the eighth, four oh two PM, we responded to a crash of injuries on Viking near Iguana. This was actually potentially a very serious situation. The rural nature of Now Then is it's no stranger to serious crashes. Unfortunately, that's something we're seeing. And I've talked about, we've been seeing an increase in distracted driving crashes and serious injury crashes. Fire Department would likely agree with that assessment. And in this case, we had a juvenile female driver who, she crossed the center line and she struck a semi head-on. This was, this was on the news and this was a pretty big deal at the time. She, she's fortunate that she survived that crash. And she was driving a passenger vehicle. Anytime we see a passenger vehicle strike a semi truck, the results are usually fairly tragic. In this case, the driver of the semi was not injured. The passenger car, the young lady driving that was, had minor injuries. Absolute miracle. We really do applaud the driver of that semi, who took evasive action at the last minute to avoid what would have most certainly been a fatal crash. In that instance, the investigating deputies were making some inquiries about why the young driver had crossed the center line. Witnesses reported she was fully in the oncoming lane. She initially denied being distracted, being on her phone. That's something we see a lot, especially with the younger drivers who don't appreciate the risks. That's one of the questions we always ask. This driver initially denied being on her phone, denied being distracted. The deputy did find in her car that the audio was still streaming from the TV show she was watching while driving.
Oh, my gosh.
She was, she was cited, of course. And hopefully, this is a wake-up call for her. And, you know, we encourage, we encourage parents, especially with younger, new drivers. I have new drivers in my house. I'm no stranger to the stress that comes with that. But unfortunately, we don't want, we don't want kids to have to learn this way, how serious driving is of a responsibility and how tragic things can turn quite quickly in this case. There's no doubt she was attempting to watch, watch this episode of Stranger Things while driving the vehicle. Thankfully, she survived. And thankfully, she didn't suffer any life-changing injuries. But it's clearly something that could have gone horribly differently, so. Another crash we responded to.
You said that was at Iguana?
Yes, sir.
So one of the things that the council would support this, I would like the staff to work with the county again and see if we can get the speed limits changed here on Viking. I know we tried it years ago and they approved it and then realized they had the wrong address and gave it to some other city. Because of the traffic in and out of our businesses here and people trying to get to that, either from the four-way stop or to the four-way stop quickly, it's become very dangerous. And I know when I was meeting the deputies on nineteen-ninth, they didn't realize that five is a forty zone, coming and going. But we haven't been able to get that on twenty-two yet. But it would be nice to approach the county again and see if we can get that revisited, because it is a, people are flying, I know, just trying to come out of bills. Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
It's too close to the corner. Councilmember Blake.
Are you patrolling two hundred and first? Because that's gotten really out of hand. I mean, the huge trucks and they're going fast down there, some of them. It's gotten, I live right on that. And I mean, I almost got hit just getting out of my driveway today. There's so much more traffic and so many big, big vehicles. And they're going so much faster than the speed limit, some of them, not all of them, but. I don't, it's become their, you know, because of the detour, it's become their go-through. But I just was wondering if we're patrolling that.
We are, and I will remind the deputies assigned to Now Then about those concerns. We've received those from other avenues as well about the detour causing speeding issues, and especially with heavy trucks. So that is on our radar. We'll continue to look at that. And I'll remind the deputies working in the city every day to make sure they're spending some time
Thank you.
in that area. And back to the mayor's comments about that area. You may recall, that was the scene of a extreme-speed fatal crash the summer before.
Yeah.
And, you know, we, and that again was a younger, a younger guy, younger man. And, you know, it's just, it's, we want to be able to, you know, tell people and help them understand the risks without having the results need to be tragic like that. And, you know, I've stood up here a lot and talked about these issues. And, you know, we're doing our best in working with our partners at the Fire Department and the other jurisdictions in the area. But, you know, in these instances, especially with the young drivers, parents have got to talk to their kids. You know, we see so many distracted driving incidents, you know, and the results are predictable in a lot of these cases, unfortunately, so. And a final call I'll note, on the eighteenth, we responded at about nine forty-five PM, a crash involving two motorcycles. Generally don't see motorcycles crashing into each other. We'll usually see vehicle versus motorcycle crashes. This instance, this was either a speed or a distraction issue as well. Motorcycles were traveling in a group. One slowed down to turn and was struck by the motorcycle behind. Again, thankfully, no life-threatening injuries, but potentially some very serious, possibly life-changing injuries in that crash as well. I'm a motorcyclist. It's one of my passions. I love riding my motorcycle. But again, when we talk extreme-speed crashes, we're seeing motorcycles at extreme speeds and fleeing on a regular basis. And again, we just remind people to please take those risks seriously, especially when you're this far out. The city of Now Then has a great response, both from the law enforcement and emergency medical services and fire. But, boy, we are a ways out from advanced critical care. And, you know, people just need, it's a beautiful town to ride through. I ride through it quite a bit. But people have to just be respectful of the consequences of what some of these crashes can do, so.
Yeah.
That's all I have for you. If you all have any questions or?
I just want to thank you and the deputies and the Fire Department as well for the participation tonight. I think it went very well with the limited parties we had here in town. But they greatly appreciated the kids and not-so-young kids appreciated the water. It was a nice night to get wet. But I appreciate your long evening there and the deputies making it to the parties and getting to know the residents. I think they appreciated that as well, so. Thank you and the team and your team for participating enthusiastically. And, you know, they all, it was a very joyous night, so. Thank you for.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a, it was a beautiful night. It is a unique opportunity for us to just go to people's houses when there's not some emergency going on and talk to people and chat with people. Boy, I could have watched the sunset over those, over those horse fields for the whole night. It was a beautiful night and I was happy to spend it here in the city of Now Then. I, when I was in investigations, I was not connected directly with the city like I am now. And that was something I had missed. I had missed that local community from my old agency. And it sure is nice to be able to do that and go and interact with people. And, you know, we just, we appreciate the passion for this city. And Administrator Boyle showed some of that passion tonight, that, you know, we have to appreciate what it's like to be in a town that takes pride in what we're building and takes pride in who we are. And nights like that, they're just, they're really nice deposits into our sort of recharge, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire Department.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, I have before you the Fire Department report for the month of July. For the month of July, we responded to a total of twenty incidents, which is seven less than the previous month of June, with an average response time of twelve minutes and four seconds, which is a twenty-two second reduction from June. which is a 22-second reduction from June. The average number of firefighters attending calls was stable at 4.2 and the Fire Department thankfully reports no dollar lost from fires, at least in the city of Now Then for the month of July. A couple incidents of note, on July 7th, the Fire Department assisted Ramsey on a two-alarm fire at Waltech, which was located on the 14300 block of Sunfish Lake Boulevard. That was also a very hot day and from my understanding, it's not the first incident at that facility over the years. Again, on July 9th, we assisted Ramsey on a large brush fire on the 17200 block of Sapphire. And again, on July 10th, we once again were summoned to Ramsey to assist them on a house fire on the 6500 block of 154th Lane. Thankfully, we have not been back to Ramsey since that last stretch. On July 16th, the Fire Department assisted the Sheriff's Office and the Medical Examiner with removing a body from a death scene on the 20800 block of Clary Road. It's certainly not one of those calls that we look forward to and unfortunately, this person had been expired for quite some time before being discovered. So unfortunately, those do happen from time to time, but that was a very difficult scene for our staff to deal with. On July 17th, we assisted the Sheriff's Office in Alina with a pediatric burn patient who stepped in a burn pit on the 7200 block of 181st. The patient did suffer some significant burns to the feet and was ultimately transported to the burn center, which was Hennepin County Medical Center, with the assistance of Now Then Fire Personnel riding with the ambulance. Later that evening, the Fire Department assisted the Sheriff's Office, as Lieutenant Jacobson spoke about, on the motorcycle PI on St. Francis Boulevard in Viking. And then finally, on July 22nd, the Fire Department assisted Oak Grove on a rather large house fire on the 18200 block of Idle Way Street Northwest. That fire required about 40,000 gallons to fully extinguish, so it was a long evening that night. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So you had mentioned in our budget meeting that the fire rig is still giving us problems?
So the grass rig is... What we're hoping is solving the problem. There's some sort of power surge or short that's impacting the four-wheel-drive module. So the module is telling the engine that it's in 4-low and it's going over speed. So it's dumping all the power on the engine. We thought we had sent it to Boyer earlier this year. We thought the problem had been reconciled. It started happening again. Boyer tried to recreate the issue a number of times and finally, they're transferring the vehicle up to their St. Michael facility from Minneapolis and they finally got it to... They finally were able to recreate the event. So their solution at this point, moving forward, is to remove the deadman switch and switch to a shore power outlet and hopefully, that will stop kind of invading that module so the vehicle doesn't think that it's in 4-low anymore.
And the rescue rig is okay these days?
It's holding up so far. Yes, sir.
Any update on the vendor?
We just took delivery in St. Francis of our new fire engine and I asked the vendor on delivery on Monday night. They still have not received the chassis yet. It sounds like they are starting to put the box together, so when the chassis does arrive at the facility, they can speed up that process of putting the entire package together. I asked for a rough estimate and we're still at January, but they wouldn't commit to anything shorter or longer. They said, "Once it gets to the shop, then we can see it in the queue and they'll do week-by-week updates on how that's progressing." But until the chassis reaches Ocala, Florida, we won't have that ability.
You're pleased with the rig you got in St. Francis?
Very pleased. They did a really nice job. I'm very excited on how this tanker is going to turn out. The quality that we have experienced, the customer service that we've experienced through this process, both with the St. Francis build and the Now Then build, has been incredible. Very pleased so far.
Council, anything else for the chief? All right.
Mayor and Council, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, planning and zoning.
Thanks, Dave.
So we have our architectural standards for commercial industrial uses, update of the ordinance, sections 11-2, 11-5, and 11-6, and Now Then City Code. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Frank?
If I might, you're probably aware that your planning and zoning commission has worked extensively over the last number of months to revise and upgrade and be more specific about the various conditions you have with respect to commercial and industrial properties. They also then proceeded, after having gone through this document, I think it was numerous times, then conducted a public hearing. We had, as I recall, three different people at the public hearing who chose to speak. I think one additional person may have called and asked a question and I think it had more to do about, hey, does this apply to my house yesterday or is it only the future? And the answer is, of course, it could only be prospective, not retrospective. Otherwise, there did not seem to be a great deal of concern or issues established and in fact, I think there was a realtor there who talked about the necessity of communities establishing their sets of criteria of what they want their city to look like now and in the future.
There's no questions or comments, I would accept a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I would move to approve ordinance 2022-02 as amended with the intention of continuing work on other ordinance changes related to planning and zoning and improvement of the business districts in the city, including but not limited to landscaping and screening requirements.
Motion, Councilmember Rainville? I have a second.
Second.
Is that a valid-02 for the ordinance? That's only our second one so far this year?
That's my understanding, that that is the appropriate number for the ordinance because the next ordinance is 03.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilmember Rainville, a second from Councilmember Greenberg. Any other discussion or questions?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders?
So with this new ordinance, some of the businesses that we have in the commercial park wouldn't be... They wouldn't meet these standards, correct?
Correct. And it would only apply if they were to rebuild or increase their building by over 50% and that portion of the building, these standards would apply.
And do we have a good enough definition of earth tone so we don't have to discuss what color blue something should be?
There was a lot of discussion on that. Yes, I believe we do at this point.
Is this commercial park we're talking about?
Commercial and industrial.
So this applies to whoever decides to build in the commercial park, industrial park now?
Yep.
And along our 22 commercial?
Yep, anything that's owned, commercial and industrial.
And we believe it's going to give the building, build potential businesses that come in, there's enough direction in there that they're not going to build a totally square building with some tin on the front and that is...
Yes, and very clear on how much plain wall, what kind of architectural features are required, you know, what a front of a building looks like. So some people like to put the back of the building accessible to the road instead of that, the front of the building. So very specific there. And it gives the Architectural Committee, which is us, an opportunity to look at it and say that meets it or doesn't. We're trying to clarify it for Architectural Review, so the respective business owners would know, but also the people that are saying yes or no would know.
So the business that was just built across the street would be a viable building going forward?
Right here?
Yeah.
Yes.
It wouldn't, would it?
It would be.
Yeah.
Wasn't it... Isn't that a post-bell or a post-frame building?
And post-frame is... The back of it is post, the architectural portion for the front, for the commercial side of things.
Okay.
I think they have the architectural features because they had to have the gradations or the grading for the commercial up front and they have industrial in the back, which is a separate zone, so...
Okay.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
It seemed like a ton of work that the P&amp;Z did.
Yeah, they sure did. Made it.
And Liz did a lot of work getting examples and things as well, so...
Frank, from your experience, is this...
Very commonplace.
Going to give us enough ability to give plans, yes or no, based on what's in our ordinance?
Yeah, I think they can help a great deal. Now, you know, whenever you try and legislate what's beautiful and what's not, it's always very difficult because it's always in the eye of the beholder. But this way, at least, there's an understanding of the expectation. Now precisely what it means, more often than not, gets worked through in the process. So yes, short answer for your short question, yes.
Your short question?
Sorry.
Perfect.
Sorry.
All right, so a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now down to the City Council. Have another moratorium. If you've been paying attention to the news at all, you'll notice that our state legislature... Somebody I heard said legislating by deception now. Slipped in a THC bill.
Thrown in there.
And without any guidance to cities as to how to regulate or enforce. So we have a bill that is unlike any in the country. The only other state that has is allowing Delta-9 THC products. And there's no guidance as to how we can enforce this. So there is a age limit to purchase product. If you're familiar with THC, infused product, whether it's gummies or beers or smokes, there's a lot of vaping that is used. So you have to be 21 to buy and the individual packets can't be more than five milligrams of the product and any individual carton can't be more than 50 milligrams, but there's no restriction on how many individual items or cartons you can buy. And once you buy at 21, there's no distribution limitation, so you can give it to all your high school friends and they can enjoy themselves at school. They also did not put any provision in there who can sell and resell and who can tax. So there's a lot of missing pieces. They were hoping the legislature would come back once they realized what they passed. This was included in a bill that hit the floor at 11:35 on the last night of the legislative session, a 490-page bill that this was on page 365 or something to that effect. So obviously, nobody read the bill before they passed it and the day before it became law, they announced that, oh yeah, by the way, this is in the bill and it becomes law tomorrow. So there's been a lot of consternation in cities saying, how do we regulate this? And the League and a number of other cities have recommended to the attorneys to put on a moratorium so that it's not being sold in your community until the legislature can come back with some guidance and ordinance around it. So what you see before you is our attorney, working with other attorneys, coming up with a moratorium in hopes that the legislature will remedy this sooner rather than later. But this gives us a year to at least not allow sale. I have no idea how it works for employment, for traffic situations, how the law enforcement enforces driving under the influence, because we don't know how they can detect levels. We don't know what we need for personnel driving heavy equipment or operating equipment. So there's a lot of unknowns. We don't really know what we can do from a personnel standpoint yet, but we do know that we can at least limit its sales in our community. Any other questions regarding the moratorium here?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
This is an interim ordinance, so it'll expire August 11th, 2023. I would assume that we've put that topic on our to-do list to watch whether the state does anything and what other cities are doing and if we need to make it permanent.
Yes, and we are... I assume Scott will be doing this, but we're monitoring the publications from the League and the other appropriate organizations that are, again, very concerned about this from a safety standpoint. You know, you can imagine if you're watching Stranger Things while you're streaming and then you're chewing THC as well, that would be not a good thing. The big thing is nobody knows how it affects personnel. We do know, we have regulations, our Fire Department and our Public Works, if you've been drinking, you don't go out and smoke flower, you don't get the fire truck. We don't know what the regulations are on this at this point. The idea is we can only put the moratorium on for a year. If the legislature comes back before that, we can then either put a permanent ordinance in place accordingly, once we know more about it. Hopefully, this will be resolved before August of next year. But that would be on a tickler file for staff to pay attention to what the League is sending Other questions?
Frank?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I can tell you, Scott County Association for Leadership and Efficiency, which is pretty much all of the Scott County municipalities and townships and other entities as well, SMSC, Shockley Middle Lock, Insu Community, the county, et cetera, are looking at this item and in fact, it's one of their agenda items tomorrow morning. If you'd like a Zoom link, I'll give it to you, they'd love to have you come in. But I think the idea here is a regulation should be consistent from municipality to municipality to municipality regardless of which county you're talking about. The trouble is, as the mayor indicated, there was no time whatsoever or no concern apparently on behalf of the state legislature on how we would deal with this because we're the ones who see it day by day on the street. And so the hope is we can put together some things that are consistent, that work all the way around. And so that's the reason really for the moratorium.
Other questions or comments?
Is the year the right timetable? I mean, I guess what I'm fearful of is next August comes by, we don't have it on the agenda or we miss the meeting, it expires and all of a sudden, you know, it slips into Now Then and there's nothing we can do about it.
The year is the statutory limitation we can do on moratoriums, so we can't extend it beyond that, but we certainly need to put it on the calendar for...
We need to make sure it's an agenda item.
Yeah, because it needs to be addressed by legislature by their May completions. But yes, that would be a tickler item.
Mr. Mayor, we do have an annual calendar for all the deadline things and I can add it to that, so it'll pop up for Scott and I.
Perfect. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders?
I make a motion to approve the ordinance 20-22-2, amending... Oops, excuse me. 2022-3 approving a one-year moratorium on prohibiting the sale, gift, or usage of THC products in the city of Now Then.
Second?
A motion from Councilmember Alders, a second from Councilmember Rainville. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, park update. Councilmember Greenberg?
Mr. Mayor? So I was out at the park, Twin Lakes Park, and did a walk-through. I played a round of frisbee golf to get a feel for the equipment out there and what the repairs it might need. So a few of the tee boxes are missing their signs and a few of the... So a few of the tee boxes are missing their signs and a few of the holes are, um, their numbers are degrading. And so those are the, but the, the rest of the nine, um, the holes, the end goal, the chain where you throw your frisbee into, those are still in good shape, don't need repair. There is an abundance of poison ivy out there to the point where it actually, you have to be so disciplined that your frisbee cannot go off course or you will, you have to go get it out of the poison ivy. And I don't know who plays there and then comes out of there going, I don't know why I'm itching. But it's like 50% of the courses, if you go off, it's solid poison ivy to the tune of a foot, a foot and a half tall. Anyway, to nuke that poison ivy would be a major undertaking. I, I don't know if it's worth it, should be done. It would just be like so much of the underbrush would be removed because of it. But I'm used to poison ivy being just a foot tall in one stalk. These are bushes. When it gets really thick, it turns into an actual bush. Anyways, aside from that, I would like to find a local contractor or in frisbee enthusiasts to go through. Clear out the posts where you launch. Fix the signage on the posts, because a few of them are missing them. And then fix the, the holes. They have signage on them as well. So I talked to Joe a little bit and I really think this is kind of, would be a nuisance for Joe. He has bigger fish to fry, roads to graze, things like that. So I would like to be able to find a local contractor to do these things. It's enough to where it's like, I just can't go out there and just fix it like that. It, it's going to take a little more.
Can you get someone to take care of that poison ivy? I mean, that's terrible.
Yeah, you know, if we nuke it with, you know, roundup or whatever, it's.
Actually, we have goat remediation right here in town and they love the poison ivy.
They love what?
Poison ivy.
I wondered if they could use that.
Did you get rid of it, Jimmy?
Goats do. Yeah, that's what Tom, Tom up here does. There you go.
Let's send goats over there.
Cows are out, goats breed poison ivy. That's what he does.
Are you hired?
Tom Sonnystall?
That's how, that's how we do it there.
Yeah. That's his business is hiring out goats.
That's for real. Oh my gosh.
He hires out the municipalities. He's, he's been at the Heritage Festival and we had tree trimmings and we were getting rid of the brushes. Can I have that? Kids came and they just fed tree branches to the goats. But that's what he does. They go into noxious weeds where other animals don't go and they just chew them down.
Well, I love this idea.
So yeah, he's right across the street on 205th.
Joel, I'll send you his number.
Perfect. All right, uh, second item would be, so I've been working with, um, a local pickleball enthusiast who lives in Now Then. And we were in discussion about the pad of cement that's over there where the basketball court is. Uh, his assessment was it's not up to the task of being a good pickleball court. Secondly, it's, he doesn't believe it's big enough. So to give a little background on pickleball, according to his viewpoint, a pickleball enthusiast, here's how it kind of works. A group of pickleballers get together at a court, which is typically two courts or more. And they, for a couple hours in the morning or a couple hours in the evening, will be a part of a group that plays pickleball. In his opinion, one court really isn't enough. In order for the group environment, it should be two. I looked at different ways to try and just maybe build up, to maybe start out really small, to just try and see if there was enough interest. He was, he, he encouraged me, try and get two.
What'd you say?
Try and get two.
Get two courts.
Try and get two courts.
Do we know the cost of a court?
What?
Do we have any idea of the cost?
I'm not there yet.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So, um, so I call, so right next to us at, in Shoreview, they just built a brand new one. So I asked them, the city, how much it costs to make this brand spanking new one that is premium. And it was to the tune of a hundred grand.
Let's, let's get three.
So then I called.
For two?
For two. So it basically is one unit.
Fifty grand a piece.
So, so it's basically one unit.
Yeah.
That has one large fence around it and two courts, two nets, one fence. That's considered a pickleball unit. Why two? They like to gather in groups and then do round robin tournaments.
Yeah, absolutely, right?
That's how they like to do it. So anyways, um, there are other communities that are offering it and it's building momentum and other communities are building courts. So I called another place that had built eight courts. Because their community was, they, they had an established pickleball court group. And they were to the numbers where it actually justified eight courts. To the tune of $450,000. So now not so much, more like $50,000 per double. So one of the concerns was this one, big enough for one court, but this spot here not big enough for two because it would start to encroach into the soccer field. And of course, we have Wednesday night cornerball club. We don't want to infringe on that. I don't know if there'd be any other room around here to do that. It's to the tune of 68 feet by 64 feet. That's about how big this space is. So an idea that we brought up, or he brought up and I kind of liked, was when I go play out, play ultimate frisbee out at Twin Lakes Park, we use the soccer field out there. But across the parking lot, there's another field that's blank. It's empty. So have you ever been to Twin Lakes Park and you go down to the beach? To the left, you can see the white soccer posts, goals.
Right.
Well tucked back, if you look over your shoulder, there's another field there that's, there's nothing there. So anyways, we talked about, well, there's lots of room there, lots of space there. We could put one there and if it gained popularity, we could add more, if you wanted to. But it doesn't necessarily need a fence. You could have the balls roll off into the grass. The balls are really, they're, they're with the walls. So if you whack one really hard, it might make it to that door. But then it's going to slow down and it's going to, so it's not like a baseball where you whack it and it just goes and goes. So anyways, if you just had grass boundaries, it could, they could just go into the grass and get it. It wouldn't be that much to do, if we were looking at trim cost.
So there's a soccer field here that we use on Wednesday nights? Is the soccer field that Twin Lake Parks utilized all the time?
So I use it every Monday for ultimate frisbee. And once in a while, once in a long time, I'll see someone use it for soccer. Or they'll play frisbee out there.
Let me ask Joel. I don't know that I've ever seen anybody use the volleyball court here. What if we went instead towards the soccer field, go east, where the volleyball court is a double up there?
That's certainly a possibility.
Because we got sand there, it might be a good base for, for asphalt.
Right.
So, Joel, question? The 68 by 64, is that, 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 that's two courts?
That's two courts.
Okay.
Yeah. So I, I just reached out out of curiosity. I reached out to someone who gave me a quote of 6,000 plus 7,500 for, um, what's that make? 1350? For nets and concrete. First place I called up that's local, you know?
Concrete or blacktop?
Yeah.
Whatever they put down, whatever they put down. I just wanted, I just wanted the local price, just for no fence, just for the raw court. Anyways, so it came around 1350. So, um, you know, that's a little more tolerable. I got quotes out for fencing. It needs to be at least eight feet tall if you want to contain the balls. But like I said, it's not absolutely necessary. But your gut reaction to a placement in Twin Lakes Park versus the sand pit here? Your gut reactions on that?
I, I like the, the idea up here, utilizing portion, you know, resurfacing the basketball court and putting in one next to it in an area that's not being used right now anyway, so. Hey, the concern I would have down there is the, you're talking about the south side of the parking lot that.
Yep.
That was, that's where we were looking at the expansion of the disc golf, if we put a second nine in?
Well, it's.
So you want to put it up here in this part? I, I don't know where.
This makes sense to me. I mean, if you do, if we do that pickleball court on the back 40 of Twin Lakes, I mean, no one's going to see it, no one's going to know. It's like, if the, I don't know, if the volleyball court isn't being used, I mean, there's a lot more, there's a lot more people that are playing pickleball than volleyball or some other.
Where you see the volleyball is where you put the second one in down by the beach. Because people come and they have a beach picnic and they, that volleyball court's used quite a bit.
Yeah.
But I've never seen.
And I think you have here, it's just, you keep better track of it too.
Yes.
It's, it's maintained better too, because there's so much more, it's so much more visible.
I'd agree with that. And the other thing that, uh, other cities have talked about is coverage or, or shading. Typically, they like to play mornings or evenings because midday is hot. But others have, other cities have encouraged involvement by, um, pickleball clubs by saying, look, you can contribute to this space. If you want picnic tables, you want, you want more amenities? You're, you're free to work with us to put stuff in. So shelter, shading.
Benches we got from our plastic bags or somewhere.
So what I'm saying is this space here has the gazebo or our, our shelter right there, which is relatively close. And then on the other side, they have bills if they need a quick refreshment, so. I mean, this space really makes sense. I didn't even think about the volleyball court. That is a great idea. And you're right, I see the one down at Twin Lakes being used all the time and I don't see this one being used. So I think that's a great idea.
I also think this might be something no one agrees with, but I think if you're going to do it, do it right. And do, get the, the fencing around it or whatever, do it right the first time. So it's appealing and it's not like half, half done.
Half baked.
And people think, well, you know, typical Now Then, not, they don't do it upright. Yeah, I, I don't want that attitude. I want, oh wow, this is a really nice court in Now Then. They drive here from Hellcrivern everywhere.
What, what happened to the thought of putting them in the ice rink? That fell over and didn't work?
Yeah, it didn't, uh, there was a couple of things. One is, uh, when we investigated that, they don't like putting ice on a blacktop surface.
Oh, okay.
That was one of the biggest things.
Okay. All right.
Okay, last thing, last thing. Now that the cows got out, we're going to let the goats out. But it's not time to let the horses out.
That's right.
Okay, well, one last thing. So. So in regards to, uh, the frisbee golf, so I do see lots of people come and use that. So I'm out there every Monday playing ultimate for two, three hours. So I've stopped a couple of people who've come to play and just questioned them. They said, we, we like the Now Then course, but it's really tiny. The other thing is, and I said, well, what would, would it be cool if we expanded to, you know, 18 holes? And they said, that would be awesome.
What is it now?
It's none. So one of the guys said, I will play yours twice to get 18 holes. But not only does he play it twice, it's a small course. So it's, I think if we were to expand, it wouldn't be just that south field. That might be a hole or two. But I would like to see it wrap into other parts of the park. So they get longer.
More steps.
The, the expansion, and I was basing this on Plymouth, so I was involved in setting this one up as a trial, the short one. And the weeds have encroached, so it's making even a tighter course than it was. But the people that play want to be able to launch, they want to do a long drive. And so going across to the south of the parking lot was a long drive. And it was going to go back through the trees, so you have long and narrow. And it was going to come around the soccer field and come back. So the original intention of the back nine was longer holes and, and long, narrower holes that would work their way through the west edge of the park, out by the lake and then come out where the, the human foosball is. Back to the park.
Yeah, right. So that part of the vision for the expansion is, I, I'm just going to say, I think a gargantuan project. You have to determine where those nine holes are going to go. Some, we have to go out there, you know, look at what trees have to be knocked down. You know what I mean? This part would be, you know, for sure, an involvement of a committee to work on this long term. And then when they reach the end, then, look, this is our goal. Now we need to figure out who's going to knock down the stuff. Now we need to figure out who's going to put in the infrastructure. This is going to be proactive. But I'd like to at least start the process of, of this. And at least have plans at some point and present the council with plans. So that's more ongoing. So these first two I want to get done, you know?
Well, are you willing to start a committee?
Yeah.
Is that, is that what you're proposing? That you would gather some people to start a committee and try to figure out the course?
Right, yeah, so. So anyways, I'm, I'm bringing that up and saying that the last one, making the extra nine holes, that is going to be a long proactive process. The first two I think are, you know, the first one is, the goats is going to be easily accomplishable with the fixing of the signs. The middle one, the pickleball court, we're making progress on that. But the third one, that'll go a while. But I would at least like to have some plans.
Yes.
You know what I mean? So we can at least see where we could go with this. Once we reach the final cost, it may be like, woo, or who knows? I don't know. We'll see when we get there. I'm just getting started. That concludes the goat presentation.
I love it. So.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is exciting. Because what I hear is the basis for a capital improvement program in the parks area. We've talked about roads, we spent a lot of time on that. That's good enough. But you've got at least three projects here that could become part of a capital improvement program. And you, let me encourage you, even though they're expensive, use a consultant to tell you where these places go. And then please, 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 don't go half-baked.
No.
Do the thing, because why? How long are you going to be here? As a city, you should be here forever.
Yeah.
So everything degrades at some point. Build it right to start with. And then make yourself proud. Because that's going to be your epitaph, for lack of a better term. Sorry, that was not mentally as negative as it sounded.
I would, I would suggest that we talk to Tom at Goat Remediation and get a price from him. Walk through their, walk through it with him and say, what, what are your goats going to charge us to eat this?
I, I suggest, Joel, that you take the, the new administrator down and challenge him to, on the golf.
I thought you were going to say.
Here we go.
I thought you were going to say, call the sheriff and ask him who let the cows out.
Only Now Then, are we worried about cows and goats?
That'll be awesome.
So, so let's take an action item of that. Let's, uh, ask staff to get ahold of Tom at Goat Remediation. Go down there and walk through the course and see what it would take to. And I really think everything between the first hole and the ninth hole, that's just got to be chewed down.
Terrible.
In, in particular, I mean, it's not so bad. But if we can get that chewed down, um, the one back in the pines is, is pretty nice, but the other ones, those first and last two holes are, are pretty rough.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders?
Can I make a motion that we authorize Joel to spend up to $10,000 in expense from the general fund to handle the goat remediation of the weeds and to, uh, fix the signs that need to be fixed and a couple of the posts that need to be fixed for the nine holes? And then continue his investigation and bring back a proposal for the pickleball court in lieu of the volleyball court in the main, uh, in the main park area? And then have him continue with his investigation of the additional nine holes on the, uh, with his investigation of the additional nine holes on the frisbee disc golf course in Twin Lakes?
I, I would ask to, to amend that, to have him work with, with Scott on it. Because obviously, we want to be turning these things over to, to staff now that we're building up staff. But I, I think that as far as setting up contracts and stuff, I'd like to, I'd like to see Scott involved as well.
So that's like, can we just give him, it's like, if as long as it's up to this, it doesn't have to come back and just get it done versus?
Question I have for Frank, since we're improving a capital turf.
That's not capital.
Yeah, the, the property is.
Yeah.
If we're improving capital turf, can we use our capital funds on that?
I presume, yes. They've got, they're longer than ten years in, in their lifespan. I certainly have seen enough parks done on that basis.
Because if we can take, rather than the general fund, if we can take it out of the park fund.
If we can capitalize it versus expensive, perfect.
All right. So if you guys could confirm that, that's appropriate use? Because it is improving the property that isn't changing. It's, it's park land and it's improving the park land. We can use capital funds for that. And then if you can just have Joel work with the staff on that.
So amend my motion to funds from the capital and Joel to work with staff.
Okay.
Second motion?
And second, by Councilmember Alders, second by Councilmember Greenberg. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
Um, a couple of years back, there was an eagle sculpt from, I think, Oak Grove that did the, some of the plaques as part of one of their projects. So that might be something to see if there is another eagle sculpt that needs a project to be done.
I think, I think what you want to do, though, is build them right. They probably should be a medal.
Yeah, yeah, professional.
And, and typically, tee boxes have either asphalt or concrete.
I'm just asking the little, the sign.
Yeah, the signs for the tee.
Yeah.
And then the signs on the, the hole itself.
I thought what he had done were very nice, what he did. But I just, it's a way to get people involved, too.
Good job, goat, Joel Gold, gold digger.
Joel, Joel Greenberg.
We didn't vote.
No. So all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. One more item?
Three D.
Resolution establishing pre-meeting policy for mayor and city council members. Councilmember Alders, you want to pull this one out?
Yeah, I want a little overview of what the ask is and background.
All right. Interim city administrator.
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I will admit that this is largely taken out of the city of Prior Lake's set of bylaws for their city council. In this day and age, being a city council member requires an awful lot of things. And those awful lot of things are more than attending city council meetings once a month. And you've had that experience, every one of you. You are on the CIP committee, you are on the hiring committee, you are liaison to recycling, you serve on the WMO, and mayor, you are the liaison to the planning commission. That is, that is more, and that's only one example. That is more than just attending a meeting. And so the intent here is to be able to encourage people, yourselves, to attend these other meetings and participate. In the process, two things happen. One, normally the committee becomes better because they're, they're having the good fortune of seeing the world a little bit from your perspective and hearing your perspective without you necessarily, you know, making the call. Secondly, you become better because you're seeing things at a broader scale. And that's, I think, very important to the city of Now Then. Not everyone is as well suited as each of you are socially, economically. And should those folks not become council members because they can't necessarily afford to take a couple of hours off, or an hour, or whatever it is, in order to attend these meetings? I don't think that's the way our system was ever intended to run. And so the proposal there is to identify five different types of meetings that you believe have some utility, A for you, B for the community. And to say, "Okay, in the event that you go to that meeting, or those kinds of meetings, then you're paid $50 for your time." Now, I think you'd agree that $50 for a meeting is not, that's not big bucks. I don't, I don't think we'd get a whole lot of people here taking a job for 50 bucks a meeting. But it does, as I indicated, one, it respects your, your time. It tries to at least reimburse you for that time. Or that individual who is not presently a council member, that, that may want to become a council member, that understands it's more than just our monthly meetings. And what we've tried, what I've tried to do is, and, and by the way, this is up to you. If there are two, if this is too broad, say so. If you think some of those meetings are, ah, needless, we don't have to cover them, then strike them out. It's okay. If, if the $50 is, is too much, make it $30, make it $40, whatever. But provide, in my estimation, provide some motivation for not only yourselves, but future council members to become broader, to see, to be able to attend these other meetings and become better representatives of your constituents.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
As long as we're in the discussing, discussion stage, representing the city of Now Then, along with me at the URWMMO is Dan Bryan, who goes there for free currently.
Okay.
So, this, would, would we consider, if we're going to do this, would we consider adding someone who's not on the council to be reimbursed if they're representing the city in some capacity?
You know, I, we used to, I mean, if you were on a committee, you were reimbursed. And I thought we used to reimburse the residents that served on the watershed as well. But when we quit reimbursing the council members, I think we dropped the other resident representation. But they used to get reimbursed for being on the watershed.
And Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
I would agree with Councilmember Greenberg that if, as a council, we're going to appoint somebody to represent us as, on a committee, that's a legitimately organized governmental committee, that they should be compensated at the same amount if indeed we determine we would do this for council members.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
I'm curious what the other council reaction was to 50. Did that seem a little much? Did that seem adequate? I'm just gonna say, my gut reaction was, I thought 30 would be more along the lines of normal. But hey, I chase cows when I get out, so.
It used to be 50.
And my question is, we need to have some parameters around what, what we're paying for. I mean, someone might choose to go to five things in one month and we pay 50 dollars to them because they're volunteering for all this stuff that maybe we don't feel is that important, or it's their choice.
Mayor, members of the council, mayor?
Yes.
Okay. If you read through the policy, the proposed policy, and you can amend this. City administrator shall approve per meeting remediation only for meetings where the following criteria are met. Task forces or work groups that the city council member has been appointed to by the city council. So who's got the power? The city council. In this case, the hiring committee, okay? And the CIP committee. You don't have a plethora, or plethora, excuse me, of committees. Meetings of city advisory committees, which the city council member has been appointed as liaison. In this case, the only thing I'm familiar with is planning commission liaison. And I'm not trying to play favorites here, don't get me wrong. Meetings of bodies which the city council member has been appointed to as the city's representative. Anoka County Fire Protection, Upper Rum River Water Management Board, right?
Right.
You have the power here in this case. Four, and this has been through the mill. I've represented this for 20-plus years. And it's, it does make for better council members. And, and that's no criticism to you. Four, policy committee meetings, for example, board of directors, training, or annual meetings of metro cities, League of Minnesota cities, League of Minnesota cities, or National League of Cities. Guys, rarely, I, I've had, I've been, I've struck out in nine out of 10 times trying to get council members to go and become a member of a policy committee for, excuse me, metro cities or League of Minnesota cities. Why is that so important? Because you really do hear the perspectives of other cities. And it melds with the many things that go through Now Then and makes you a better council member. You, you come back with ideas that otherwise you wouldn't have. Finally, meetings at which city council member is acting as the city's official representative pursuant to council direction. So local government officials, Chamber of Commerce, school board, joint meetings. Normally, at the beginning of the year, at some appropriate time, you say, the mayor will be the liaison to planning commission, council member Green will be the liaison to the water management, Rainville to recycling.
Recycling.
Hiring, CIP, or not.
Goat mitigation.
And we're not talking about enormous money.
So we decide this before. So I mean, if someone volunteers to be on all these committees, we can say, "Wait a minute, you can do that, but that isn't part of who you appointed for this."
Absolutely. Amen. You're right. You control.
I, I've got two things here. One thing, I don't think it's gonna make a hell of a difference to anybody. And secondly, maybe the possibility should be raised the amount of money that the, I mean, it's not gonna, I'm not talking for myself because I obviously am not thinking about myself at this point. Maybe raise the amount of money that they, the members of the council and the mayor get.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
To Councilmember Blake, the issue I have with that is that, and I voiced this when the policy was changed many years ago, is it incentivizes council members, I'm not speaking anybody here, it incentivizes council members to receive a higher monthly stipend without having to do anything other than to come to this meeting.
Nobody, nobody can just come to this meeting, Mary.
But, but what I, but what, okay, let me finish. So it disincentivizes council members, it, it, excuse me, incentivizes council members for not doing anything over and above. And it, for council members that choose to participate in these other organizations, it disincentivizes them because they're not being compensated for their time. And, and as Frank said, this is not a lot of money. I, but it just, it compensates for, it compensates people for doing things, for not doing things. And it doesn't compensate people for doing things. And that's my.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I disagree with that because I think that you can't be on the council and not have extra jobs. It's just not possible. I don't, I've hardly ever gone to one council meeting a month, just because you got a budget meeting, or you've got, you're on a hiring committee, or you're, you've got an extra meeting that's called because you wanna check on something. I mean, it seems like there is hardly any month that, it is just one meeting for everybody. So I don't think that anybody's sitting here saying, "Well, I'll join because I'm only have to do one thing ever." That isn't true. If you're on this council, you are going to be involved. And, and even if we didn't get paid, we still all got on, you just named them. We still got on committees, didn't we? And we still did our extra jobs. So I'm not thinking that that incentive made a reason for me to take, take that position. Basically, I got on the hiring committee because Jason pushed it and Joel voted for it. No, I'm just teasing. But really, it's, I just, I just don't think we sit here and go to one meeting. That's all.
And, and to Councilmember Blake, I, I probably did not phrase that best. You know, we get a stipend that, that covers us for council-related, so budget, so special council meetings when we're dealing with the administrator. Those things, that's part of our monthly payment.
Right, okay, yeah.
But if a council member, with the approval of the council, because we can't do anything on our own, with the approval of the council, chooses to be appointed to the Upper Rum River, be appointed to something else, or be the representative to something else, then that additional step should be compensated. And it used to be, years back, when I first got on the council, that you were compensated for doing those things. Going to the League of Minnesota cities conferences, going to League, the Anoka County Government Officials meetings. Now, there hasn't been one of those in a while because COVID's thrown loops and everything. But you were compensated. You got your meal reimbursed because that was part of going to that meeting. That was an evening meeting. But we had, the, the new policy was enacted because there were people that didn't want to choose, chose not to do those extra things and didn't like that others did. And, and so then took that ability and be compensated for the others that wanted to participate.
That's what they did at the time, but they, they took that away and raised the stipend.
Yeah.
And so there was less activity. They weren't participating in the extra meetings, but they were now getting higher stipends.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
I mean, I don't know that it's a ton of money, but I'm just looking at, our budget is going up 16% next year and over what our tax base is. So we're at a point where our salaries and benefits are up 18%. We're saying our maintenance area, at least first pass, is coming up 26%. So we're up $300,000 over last year. And about $700,000 over two years ago. So I tend to agree with Linda. I don't know that it's gonna drive a ton of different behavior. And I don't know that I'm ready to say, "Yeah, I think we should get more in an area where we're cranking the budget higher than we ever have and we're not gonna cover our revenue."
Mr. Mayor?
Frank.
So I think the legislature kind of anticipated some of the, some of the things I'm hearing right now. And they said, "In order to effectuate any kind of increase and pay to yourself, however it's doled out," they said, "You have to approve it before the election, but it can't be effective until after the election." So if you wanna check on, you know, on the basis of the public's perspective, you could adopt it. But this is not effective until January 1, 2023. Who knows who's gonna be here then? And in the meantime, if the public says, "Oh, yeah, this is way too much money," they can address that issue by voting people out if they think that this is inappropriate. Just to, to try and respond to the fact that is this an issue to others?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
Linda, would you say you're, you'd be not in favor of this? Or are you in favor of this?
Well, I feel like the amount of money I get, I, I imagine that I'd be going to more than one meeting a month.
Is this, is, is what we're being paid adequate?
I think.
Or should we have more for meetings?
I feel like it's pretty adequate in the fact that it's, nobody gets paid that much money for one meeting, obviously. So the expectation in my mind was that there would be more involved than that.
Sure.
For that amount of money. You can't, there isn't a job around where you get paid that for going for a couple hours.
What do you think about compensating a citizen of the community?
I think they should be, definitely, because we're not getting. I think they should be, definitely, because we're not getting anything for going to that. I think a citizen who volunteers to do something like that should definitely get paid.
Well, I'm along the lines.
I'm not against, I think maybe, maybe, oh, well, we're good.
Well, what I was going to say is.
Though, it's like, do we think that the citizen going there is adding value? Because we question whether or not the whole thing, specifically on this watershed thing, adds value to anybody. So, it's like, what are we gaining because he's going? What value is he bringing back? So, there's never a report out, there's never anything he's bringing back to the table that you don't bring back. So, I would tell you, like, it's kind of like when we travel for work. It's like, if there's two or three of you going, why?
I guess I would say this, Nowland is one of the two biggest cities in the watershed.
I get that.
And we work in tandem.
He's a voting member, right?
Yeah.
Gives us two votes on it.
So.
And we pay a lion, you know, we pay a lion's share because of our size.
Yeah.
So, anyways, I think, I personally think he, this is where I'm going. I would be inclined to rescind my portion. And if we, if we agree with that, but I would say that citizens should be compensated.
Yeah. And we do a stipend for the person that helps out with the farmer's market, right? With some stipend, it's like.
Yeah, I think a citizen should be paid.
Give him a stipend RCA for, on a yearly basis, on what we think the value of the position is.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, so I personally, when I saw this, I was like, I don't actually need that. But I thought of Dan immediately, so if we would agree on that, then I would vote for that.
So, if that, I mean, if we believe that's a valuable position, I would say, let's give him a stipend that we review or revisit on a yearly basis to make sure that the task that he's doing is aligned to the stipend. I mean, I think Mary presented a very good case for the person that helps out and manages the farmer's market and the sponsors and how all that works. It's like, that's a, that's a gig, right?
Right, big job.
And there should be some compensation there. If we believe Dan's adding value and we're asking him to do it, let's give him a stipend and move on. And then it's like administratively, it's not this, who went to what, how am I doing this? We got someone that's not on the payroll that is, and it's just.
Right, I'm just going to add this at the tail end. So, I have about four more months.
What?
So, Dan, Dan has, Dan has years on that committee. So, he knows everything that's been done by the watershed going back years and years and years. It took me quite a while to get caught up in that organization, to understand the implications of Bowser, of the DNR, their rules in the city, how this is a constant tug-of-war between the city and the state. And this watershed is in between. So, it's not just a place where we go play ball, it's a place where we, where we arm wrestle with the state over what we can do legally and what dollars are going to be extracted from us to satisfy them. So, it's basically, it's a wrestling match the city has with the state over dollars. And we're always working in the city's interest.
I would propose to give him a few of the stipend for the position.
I agree, he should be paid.
So, in that case, I would go for the full 50.
For him?
Yes. When I was looking at myself, I was like, 30 or nothing. But for, for a citizen acting on behalf of the city, I say 50.
Yeah.
But do we need to tie the two together, I guess is my point? Why don't we just develop an RCA similar to what we do with the farmer's market? And say, for this position, we're going to give this individual a $600 stipend for his services and then just renew that RCA on a yearly basis.
Okay, then, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
And then try to separate that.
Councilmember Blake.
No, go ahead, you finish.
Well, and then you'd separate this from that individual special case variation.
Sure.
All right, so we'll have RCA written up to compensate citizen involvement on, we already do it on our commissions, do it on the watershed. There'd be a separate RCA.
Maybe we, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
Maybe we should check with other cities our size and what they're paying their council and their mayor. Maybe we're, maybe we need to look at that, maybe.
Mr. Mayor. I did do that, I did do that.
Cities our size.
And your monthly stipend is very similar or high, higher than some others. Very good. However, many of the other cities do pay the stipend to go to the other meetings. And I would say from my perspective in the office, too, is that if more people went to the League of Minnesota's education stuff, you know, coming in here, I didn't know much of anything, they're a great resource. And if you have new council members coming in.
We did go.
Then it would be a great thing for education.
But we went and we didn't get paid to go, you know, I was gone every year, but I didn't get paid to go. And I still went because it's important to go.
But we'll.
Because I know so little.
But not, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
But not everybody's in the financial, has the financial ability to go. And so, by helping compensate some of that time, it allows people to go. And I would just say in regards to the compensation for commissions, we currently pay our planning and zoning, the other, the only commission we have is the planning and zoning. They currently make $20 a meeting.
Yeah, that's.
So, whatever we do, we, I believe we need to be consistent between the commissions. Now, I don't remember how often the watershed meets.
It's like every other month.
Every other month, so, you know, I don't know. Commit, the planning committee meets at a minimum of 11 times a year, sometimes less. There were a couple of years when there wasn't much on, that's probably not going to happen again. But I think we need to be consistent with that. In regards to the farmer's market, the stipend that is given to the farmer's market manager and other workers there is taken from the funds that the vendors pay to be at the market. They're really, I think, one year we, because we had to replace some things, we used some city funds. Other words, all of the monies that are expended for the market come from the market fees. So, it's not costing residents any money to do that.
Oh, so when we passed that thing for $2,000, that, it's $1,000. Oh, $1,000, I can't remember, sorry. That, that is just coming really back to us through the vendors.
The vendors are paying for, to have a market manager and a logistics coordinator.
And it just goes back, so we don't really pay it out of the city, we don't, no?
So, so that's not an apples-to-apples. But a planning commission and a watershed commission, those people should be.
Equal.
To me, that should be equal. So, maybe we need to bring that piece of it back, have staff come up with some ideas to what would be realistic for a planning commission and a watershed commission. And then council has to decide how we want to do the council piece to it.
On the council piece, is it the 50 bucks or is it anything that is an issue? Joel, you were thinking 30? Is it a, is it a token that encourages people to participate in some things that they might not otherwise?
Yeah, it's been discussed at the upper rum, compensation for duties.
What do they get, do they ever say?
I think a few people shared what they were being compensated. So, I thought, you know, I'd see if we could get some for.
Dan.
Dan.
Yeah.
Prior to our change, it was $50 for, for those meetings approved by the council.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I believe that's important to acknowledge that the meetings are to be approved prior to. If there's an emergency meeting, then you'd have to deal with that after the fact. But these are approved meetings, they are approved by the council if you're going to be appointed to something as a liaison or as a representative. Those are things that council has agreed that, yes, Councilmember Johnson or Councilmember Smith or Councilmember Larson will be our representative, representative at this, at this different meeting. So, it's not like we can get up on a Monday morning and say, oh, I think I want to find five meetings to go to this week because I got nothing better to do with my time. That's not an issue. And I think before, people thought that that is what might happen. And that's not what it is. It's, they're all pre-approved, council has determined that they are important things to participate in and has chosen a representative from the council to be.
So, the council fix the representative.
Yeah.
Yeah, like we always do.
Like we do in January. Joel, how long does a watershed meeting go?
An hour, 45 minutes to an hour.
See, that's. Well, that's really short.
You should see those guys.
That's a little heavy.
You should see those guys rip through there. So, I'm fine with 20, what we pay our planning and zoning, I'm fine with 30, the number I came up with earlier. I'm fine with 50, whatever we determine, I'm fine with.
I mean, planning zonings can go, planning meetings can go three hours plus.
Yeah, for 20 bucks.
Not typically, we usually enjoy nine.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alders.
Should we scope into, if you're on a separate, I'm going to say, non-city type of committee similar to, the watershed is probably a pretty good example, right? But I don't know that I need 50 bucks because I attended a couple of capital improvement discussions on what we're going to do there. So, if it's, if we scope it to, the watershed seems like that's another scope of business and someplace you got to go to. And if there's some, and if there's some continuing ad that we want to say, hey, everybody gets whatever. Everybody gets, you know, if you want to go to, Jeff likes to go to the League of Minnesota, League of Minnesota Mayor's discussion or offsite. So, if there's some of that, I guess I'm okay with that. What I'm not totally okay with is, you know, we had to hire, had to, we got the opportunity to hire Scott, which was a ton more meetings. I don't know that because we get put on one of those councils or we're interviewing candidates that we're all of a sudden eligible for another 50 bucks.
Oh, my goodness, and here I thought I was eligible on that hiring committee.
So, I mean, so I'm okay if we say, I think you have, that is something that's totally, we're asking you to be a liaison with the city to go to this watershed. That I can wrap my mind around that. For some of this other stuff, I don't know that I'm okay with. And I also agree with Mary, if we say it's worth 50 bucks, it should be worth the same to the planning and zoning.
Yeah, that's.
That is like, if that, if whatever that number needs to be, that you knock it down to whatever the P and Z is, or you bring the P and Z up to whatever you think this number is.
I agree with Mary on that, too. The P and Z and $20 a month, I, you know, if we're going to give $30 to watershed, then $30 to P and Z. Those people are putting out half the time, it's like a volunteer job.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
So, I'm looking at the resolution in front of us, under the qualifying meetings, if I hear Councilmember Alders, he would take out number one.
What is number one?
Task forces or work groups that the city council member has been appointed to by the city council. Examples were hiring committee or CIP. Going to number two, then it would be okay, that it's meetings of the advisory committee, so like the planning commission or the Upper Rum River.
Yeah.
And at some point, we may reinstitute some of our other committees, too. So, maybe verbiage of and others to be determined.
Like I said, it says examples, so that's an example, others were created.
And then three, four, and five would be, it spells out that you've been, you are this, the council has determined, you're the, you're the, you're appointed, you're our representative.
To what?
To, well, here's the Anoka County Fire Protection, the Upper Rum River. Number four is policy committees or Board of Directors meetings, training or annual meeting for conferences for Metro Cities, League of Small Cities.
But if we're paying for those meetings already for people to go to them.
No, we are not.
If, when you.
No, not policy committees.
Huh?
We don't pay for policy committees.
I think we get through the travel and, and I, when he had to travel to, when Jeff went, wherever it was, that was a.
This is, these are policy committees, these are the people that actually determine the legislative policies. So, that's a different.
So, that's not the training.
But I mean, when we went to the league, they paid for our.
For the training, yeah.
To the training, yeah. And they paid, both paid for the training for Natalie and our new administrator. But, you know, they're going to, we're going to pay for their training, right?
We do, this is, are we paying for someone's time? Not the, the training is separate.
Yeah.
And I'm okay with the continuing ad, I just, I don't, I don't know that I can wrap my head around. It's like, if we use the, I'm on the capital improvement plan, you're on the hiring committee, we all were on the, got into the hiring of this process. So, strike one and then figure out what we think is fair and equitable and then align the P and Z to whatever we think is fair and equitable.
I agree, that's a good idea. And go through that and decide what we feel should, there should be.
So, in essence, you're saying if it's a, an ongoing or the hiring committee, hopefully, that's a.
It's done, Scott's here. Yeah.
Capital improvement will be ongoing. But you're saying if it's, if it's here in town, it's part of your.
It's part of your role.
Your stipend. If you're leaving town for it, you know.
We need to consider it.
Because the other thing is, is encouraging people that get on that have jobs, that may have to take an afternoon off to go to a league training, that's, you know, the cost of the training is covered, but they're also taking an afternoon off to do that.
Yeah, and for me, it's not, I mean, me, it's time, it's not the, it's not the financial piece. But I believe that there's some, you know, because you, if you got to drive somewhere, it's XYZ and you're stopping, a bag of chips and a can of pop is six bucks, right? So, it's like, and then you're there for two hours and you're driving back.
And you're paid for gas. That in itself is an issue.
So, I propose we strike one, we let two through five roll through, and we set the dollar amount to 45 bucks.
45?
I don't know why I picked 45, but 20 seems.
How about 40, how about 40?
20 seems low, 50 seems a little high to me, and we align that with the P and Z monthly rate.
So, they would go up to 40?
40 or, I'm saying 40.
40.
You like 40?
I was at 30.
I go 40.
50 was a little high, let's say 40.
It's doubling their income.
Well, that ought to get people to sign up for P and Z, that would make me, it just tell me I get paid double.
But I think that, I mean, to me, that I can wrap my head around that, I just, I don't think we should, when it's inside the city limits, I think it's our own deal and we didn't sign up for this thing to get rich.
Obviously. I did, but it didn't turn out. Someone had told you this, had misinformed me about this job completely.
Can I make that motion?
You can.
So, I make a motion to proceed with additional funding for items two through five at a $40 an hour rate and increase the P and Z committee's rate to $40 per session or per meeting.
When the first part was $40 per hour?
No.
You meant 40 per.
Meeting.
Meeting. Per event, per event.
But now, if someone who's on there, like Dan Bryan, gets elected to be part of the council, then he no longer would be eligible for that payment, right?
He would be.
He would be. So, then Joel's getting it.
Yeah, come January 1st.
And he's in a lame duck session.
Sorry.
Joel, you're not.
The whole going, the whole.
We're going to have to reconsider.
I left them all.
So, we have a motion here.
Motion on the floor, motion on the floor. We have a second.
I seconded.
We have a motion, Councilmember Alders, seconded by Councilmember Blake, discussion.
We had a lot already.
Any other questions or comments? So, we've got it captured, strike one, $40 on two. So, we've got it captured, strike one, $40 on two through five. P and Z and the citizen representative on the watershed, effective January, obviously, would get compensated at the same rate. Any other clarification?
When we, when we took out the first one, we made it clear that any, any meetings we had which were held within the city limits, we would not be paying for, if we're on the council, correct?
Correct.
Our internal committees.
Internal committees, all right.
Yeah, internal committees, because we do, the commissions we would.
Okay.
All right, any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, speaking by by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
There is no further business, I move to adjourn.
I second.
Second. We are adjourned.
Do we have to keep this, anything with the budget that we, we just received? Information about the budget for our next meeting, don't we have another meeting at 29?
Yep.
Did you want us to keep?
Yes.
This, this package we just got tonight?
Thank you.
All right, okay.